From the coming order to any.
April eighth, twenty twenty four meeting of the city council will not come to order local. Craig. Mike.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Devin. We will open for regular session for the order of business. Take a look at the agenda. So we need to approve the agenda as corrected. So those two meetings were April first. So is there a motion to approve the agenda as corrected? Holy motion. Pam, second.
Second.
Ted, roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted, Mike.
Yes.
Pam, Devin.
And.
Okay, the agenda has been approved as corrected. All right, Rhonda, Guy, would you like to give your report?
I will, real quick, like, because it's short and sleepy this month, which is kind of nice. What I actually did up in the department was strictly Reddit, because there wasn't anything else to say. Our February water usage was.
Rhonda, come up here to the table.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Not yet, I'll come over. Sorry, guys. I did. Water usage for February, because we're going to be 8,000 gallons for the month, averaging 12,000 gallons a day. But we, that, our energy compliance, as far as we know, we're putting D and R, I'm working on consumer confidence reports right now, that we should have before the end of May, that's what we're working on. And, uh, February water waste water flows totaled 732,000 gallons, averaging 25,000 gallons a day. Now, obviously, we're questioning that, um, I'm going to make another phone call tomorrow to see if I can get Jetco down here and have them recalibrate or calibrate to see just how accurate our bill leader is. And to best, if that may be part of our problem. Darwin's done some fancy footwork out there and some of the other stuff, and none of that seemed to be, it wasn't that simple. So we'll see if this only, and it's medical, you're just saying we're here, hasn't it? So, you know, we're supposed to do it every other year at the minimum anyway, so it's.
And who does it?
Jetco. They are a, um, electronics company out of Altoona that works with water, and works water facilities and maintaining their electronics. So, um, and they work with most of Central Iowa, they're the big boys. Beyond that, uh, spring discharges probably going to be delayed. I was out looking for levels again tonight and recorded them, and I'm going to suggest to Alan that I move from cells one and two on the east side, or to cells three and four on the west side. Just to balance things out a little bit more, but you guys will need some rain for this, and I don't know what I mean. We're doing that everywhere, I mean, we're all trying to scramble what we do next. There's not a lot we can't do. And as long as we're not in discharging, it's not a big deal. So, just the odd way we're doing it, hopefully we don't get five inches off of our budget. So, with that, wastewater compliance also, and of course, the big thing is, which you guys can all see as well, is spring in the air. It's here this week for sure. Any questions for making a review for me?
I have one.
Okay, hi!
Rumors are running rampant, uh, we're high over rural water.
Oh.
Price.
Yeah.
Supposed to be like an eight hundred percent increase by July or August or something.
But we don't know anything yet. They've not, they, the discussions are between the city of Newton and IRUA, and they haven't told any of the rest of us anything. So, I've already asked the question, basically what I was told is that, um, the discussion was had, the paperwork was put on the table, rural water, um, and it's not IRU Water, it's Ira Regional Utilities.
Yes, that's the new, correct.
That's the new, that's the new, that's the flavor of the week as far as their name, I guess. So, um, they have threatened, and apparently it is in the works, to take the city of Newton to court. And they won't know until the first of July whether that's actually going to happen or not. And it could be a no brainer, or it could be to see if they could raise it up that high, is that why they're? Regional Water is trying to block that and raising.
Okay, so it's Newton that's trying to raise it.
Yes.
Regional Water that doesn't want to raise it, but will have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
What I do know is the price that's out there right now, the 109 that they are paying, is a price that was locked in back in the nineteen, late nineteen seventies, felt early eighties, when their contract was first authorized. And, um, they, the powers that be at rural water at the time managed to get it into the contract that, for the life of the contract, that was going to be the price. And they had, it was tied to, um, USDA work and, and funding to rural water, and that contract is not sunset. So, it may be, I, I don't know, that's just it, I don't know. But it's, and, and everything right now is being held. They're all very, the city won't say anything, or the water won't say anything, they're all very close to their chest.
So the city of Newton is a major water supplier, correct? Now, does that happen before or after this recent, I said recent, several years over now, uh, about the going from Iowa rural water to Iowa rural utilities? Because it might understand that Newton wasn't the major supplier.
Newton has always been the major supplier of water for the, for the rural water company.
Okay.
From the time it was Jasper County Rural Water, to then it became Central Iowa Rural Water, now Ira Regional Utilities. Um, and there's done a couple of other name changes in there along the way, um, but it's, it's still is, is rural water basically.
So now all of a sudden, now it even sounds like the smart ones.
Still got a pretty good bill to pay. Um, yeah, we've got a couple of people down there who've really patted themselves on the back this week.
Yeah, no doubt.
But we have no idea what it's going to, you know, what it's going to do. And, okay, there's all kinds of speculation and assumptions and things like that. I can't, I really can't give you any more than, we don't know. Sorry.
Nothing like, nothing like a void would generate the rumor, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
Nothing like a definite baby.
Or maybe not. You never know. So, anything else on that?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, that makes sense. I'm not here, you will, I like, will let you go to Gilman.
Have a good evening and a good meeting.
You too. Um, Deputy DeArquise, you want to give your report?
Sure. All right, so for the month of March two thousand twenty four, so a total of thirty-eight documented business checks, forty-three miscellaneous patrol sessions, three bar checks, one civil traffic control, one public contact, uh, warnings given, one traffic stop, warning citations issued, one disabled vehicle, vehicle towed, two case follow-ups, one officer initiated, uh, citations were issued, two oh four, one officer service, one civil issue, subjects will work out the issue, one medical incident, and assistant, assistance provided to EMS, one missing person, subject was found without incident, and one weapons-related incident, which definitely were other ones located. Any questions, comments in terms?
Weapons related, what is that, is that, uh, something we need to worry about, somebody has a weapon, or?
I don't know. I think it's in the margins.
We, we called nine one one when, when there was a gunfire, because Hank heard him say that they were going to shoot.
Oh.
By the time they got here, they of course can't find anybody.
Okay.
But that's probably what it was.
Any other questions for Deputy DeArquise? Thank you so much. Please review the minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting, and after reviewing, if you have any edits, please indicate. And then, uh, after you review, if someone would make a motion in a second, we'll approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion this afternoon, March eleventh.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Mike, roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted, Mike, and Devin. The minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting have been approved as printed. Please look at the minutes from the two meetings on April one, twenty twenty four, the special meetings. After reviewing, if someone would like to make a motion in a second, we'll approve these. I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike.
Yeah.
Pam, yes, Devin. Please review the financial report from March. Please feel free to ask any questions. We got an influx in Liberty from Lisk, Liberty and Liskam, didn't we?
Yep.
Yay! That's wonderful.
One else.
Wonderful. Is that the approximate total then of the one eleven, the Beeg Street, uh, built, year one thousand three hundred and sixty six?
So, I should.
Is that for them?
That's not the whole bill, that should be.
Oh.
That's what it says to.
Queen of Queen of. Okay, that, but that's basically what that Queen of Bill.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve? Okay, there's a, um, motion to approve the financial report, is there a second?
Yeah.
Roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
The financial report has been approved as approved. Please review the girls from March, and if you have to feel free to ask any questions.
We did get the bill for the party equipment, it does not include installation yet, um, with the bottom line, it was how much was the park on, and I used all of that, and I addressed it, and then, how was the local option sales set? And wait until we're done.
Fuel and co-op, five hundred diesel, is that?
We wanted that was.
Just gas.
A lot of, about half of it is by fire department, probably more than that was fire department, but it's, yeah, it's gas and diesel. The trainers, they got a grant. Most of that's covered here already, and we're great exactly the amount. And they get a thousand dollars for that twelve hundred.
Would you like to motion to pay the bills for March twelve, three, four, eight?
Is there a second to pay the bills as stated on March? Also, can you, roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Devin. Bills have been approved. Residents concerned, many residents concerned this evening. Do you have a resident?
Uh, possibility of buying a four inch wall.
Yeah, that's.
I think he's interested in the Beeg Street.
Yeah, and we're going to discuss that with him.
Yeah, we're going to go through that.
I wasn't sure if that was a concern.
Yeah, we're going to go through that, very, very systematic. Thank you. All right, uh, all business, any nuisances?
I'm really wondering if that's something we've done.
One sitting up in front on State Street, white car, um.
No plates.
No plates, it doesn't look like it's brand since half forever. Uh, gas tanks wide open on the back, I don't think there's a bumper.
No, there's not.
It's just, it's, should not, should not, yes. Oh yeah, it's not.
I think it's been there close to thirty days.
It's, it's an accident we have, if there was somebody.
Did it go with nuisance house?
Yes.
We'll send, if you, if you, um, agree, we'll send a nuisance letter to them.
Well, if we're bringing up nuisance, it's all bad neighbors again, then. Not say it again.
What did we decide we had?
I don't know, but I don't think you. It smells so bad when it is above forty degrees over there. So, it's five hundred two point, it is atrocious. Literally left people be, but it's ridiculous.
I went through the ordinances and I can't see anything that.
Talks about it when oxygen smells.
It does.
And basically impede you on your comfort. It isn't there. Because I read it all before we came up the first time and referenced it and everything. So, I'm, I'm just saying, it's in there in, uh, it's in the nuisances, I believe. It's just right in there, it's like the first page.
So if we send him a letter, which we can very easily, how do we, how do we enforce it?
Well, if they don't try to do something, that's a lot more in such than, we could have somebody go in and clean it up. Not that it involved picking up, because you see on Facebook, people asking for, and evidently, somebody goes around and picks up after animals, so.
I wouldn't agree with that.
That's. And so, tonight, we're going to have six dogs that are in the house. That, and somebody's to go. So, outside of this, and so on.
Well, yeah, we got one, we got two now.
Yeah.
So I can, this is a letter I'd like to order to type up, I can do the car one. I've got.
One next to us has a hole in the roof now, and that's not where the tarts are, there's another hole, it's sinking in. They have a car that's sacked there for what, two years, with flat tires?
Fliers. Fliers. Well, we've got, we've got lots of issues with cars.
Well, that one though, it's got all the, all the tarts on the roof, and, and so.
You're talking about the garage?
Yeah, so then, all of that tarp comes, little slivers off, and in order for you to move it along, you're going to have to pick up all the pieces of tarp. I mean, it's a mess over there.
Where, where do you want to start on this? Yes, there's many. We have to be consistent.
The thing is, I don't, I don't want to sound quite ridiculous, because this is listening, but I just think if you are cleaning up other people so much, I mean, I, I don't know for the whyness, that's the problem.
Well, we don't dare leave our house unlocked anymore, because he sits on our doorstep with water ducts. He sits on people's doorsteps, he begs to use people's bathrooms, he, I think, it's just, it's completely out of control. They have no water, they have no electricity, they have dogs and cats. Yes. They have a big hole in the roof where it's gaping in now.
In the roof, not the house.
They say that the house is leaking, is what they told Mark.
Paper is ridiculous.
Is there any way to help them get to a building?
They don't want to. I think they're still getting insurance on their car. You know what, I can't remember that nicely.
Wait, let's get back, let's get back on track here. Um, okay, so. We've got a white car on State Street, we've got problems with five hundred two Clinton, we've got some issues at whatever number State Street. Um, where, where do you start from to stop?
Was the problem on White Street.
I bet that, I'll tell you this.
State Street.
Day three.
Clinton Street. Oh, I'm sorry, State Street.
Clinton Street is, um, Devon's name.
Clinton, oh, that's Devon's.
That's Devon's name.
Yeah.
There's a, we've got many, many vehicles that are not licensed and are not running.
Well, they will have to read that out of your ordinance book, if we could.
Well, you know, we're on our property, so.
No.
We tried that once before.
The vehicle thing.
So, the next thing, he was all stuck for, we had to turn him around.
Yeah, but we've got many vehicles that don't run.
Did she give you one of these ordinance books?
General vehicles.
Oh.
General vehicles?
Yes.
Oh. Broken glass, broken locations of parts, habitat for recent animals, inoperable, defective or isolated condition. That's always called junk.
Does it say anything here about it's got to be moved every ten days or something?
Um, inoperable, any motor vehicle which lacks an engine or two or more wheels, or other structural parts rendering said motor vehicle totally inoperable, or which cannot include fenders or power, or has not been used as an operating vehicle for a period of thirty days or more.
Well, if I had to call them, totally, it's wrong.
So, yeah, there's one. Why, that is definitely not a motor vehicle.
Two years, two years, well, there's.
Why not, if someone comes and gets a big adult there?
Well, we just got hit with a letter, so.
Well, we got Aaron Kendall, there's, how many, how many there that don't run?
I think he's only got one left over there.
I was going to say, it's been decreasing.
I don't know how many, is that Lucas or?
They got four of them.
Becky Carman, how many are at Almond?
Four, that white van still moves on it? That white van Becky's not moving anymore? I thought it still moved.
It's been there for sixty days or ninety.
A winter. I don't know how many haven't moved up to.
How, did you say four?
Four of them haven't moved in last thirty days?
Four of them don't even run.
Don't run. Okay. How many are, how many don't run down, could you tell me Darwin, uh, Linda on George Street, is there one down there?
Oh.
Yeah.
Probably got a couple of them sat there. Then across the street.
I'd like to get it cleaned up before it's Liberty and Lisk.
Good luck.
Well, if you get the letters somehow, they got.
They're on there, it's got thirty days.
And it worked.
Did it?
Yes, it did.
Get your car to get out of here.
We got some.
We got some, I would, I mean, just remove some.
Re- okay, whatever.
How many are not running up in your addition?
Well, I don't know many that work, I think there's a process. They all been under.
They got moving in the door.
They all gone out, but, and so sure there's something happened in there, so we can't, we can't.
Only a couple of them that I know have, I don't think that come out all night.
So, what is, what is the council's decision on this? Send a letter to five, to Clinton, the attorney, send that one. And then, send letters on all the rest that we just talked about?
Well, they don't know, they don't know at all.
Well, I, I.
I don't even figure out.
I agree that we have to be consistent.
I agree that we have to be consistent, yes, that's very true. Not, not, yes. Very good point, we have to be consistent.
You want pictures?
Who?
You want pictures?
Probably should, yeah. Okay, so... Um, is there a motion to give Christie the authority to do these letters based on Darwin taking pictures? And then we'll...
Not just what we've done since tonight, but what...
So, whatever is not, hasn't been operable for, is inoperable and not moved in thirty days.
Well, what if they had a plan to fix it though soon?
They could have.
No, 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 hang on.
It states within the letter that they can call.
Okay, because that's what I'm saying, if my vehicle breaks down in my driveway tonight, or whatever, whatever, for example, that I have full intention of fixing it right now. I'm not saying ones that have been sitting there for two years, that's not what I'm saying. It's gonna get a little...
But you're going to tell us, I'm gonna fix this next week, or I'm gonna fix this in two weeks.
We're given thirty days.
I'm just, that's what I'm asking, is they're gonna be able, they're gonna be able to comment.
They'll get thirty days. Notice.
Because some people, that's just what I'm saying, some people, you can fix it.
I mean, we're not sending a letter in the next day.
Well, I understand that, I understand, they said, oh, you can fix this next month, they don't have money for it, or are you gonna be like, oh, it's fine? That's what, I have seen you done this before, that's what I'm saying.
It just needs to be case by case basis.
Okay, that's all I'm gonna make sure about.
I think that's how we do it.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
But I think we need to find out every law wasn't...
It's never...
That's a very...
Okay.
One thing that I wanna say is when Hank was in here, we did this, we sent out a bunch of letters, and we had quite a hassle. So, after that, Hank tried to go talk to him before we sent the letters.
You retired.
That's an option.
Now that you're retired, Hank? Will...
Use, nuisance officer, is that what you're saying?
You got Babbitt's bird.
You're appointed Hank.
You saw how that went back.
Well, it was a lot better when you went and tried to talk to him first, rather than just sending the letter, so I'm just sending, just sending you a message.
Or are you, are you trying to say you volunteer to go talk to him?
I'm not volunteer. I'm, I can go... With somebody probably, maybe the mayor.
There you go.
Gotta have the mayor.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
You made the motion. It's for a second? Yes, okay. We'll call vote. Craig?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Devin? Okay, so, the attorney will send five oh two Clinton. And we'll send the rest, is that correct, Christie, based, maybe?
First of all, yeah.
Maybe, maybe, well, maybe, maybe not, we'll figure that out.
So, what do we got at five oh two Clinton? What do you got down there?
That's the smell.
Comes in the whole, not, not just...
I don't work on cars.
No, no, we're on smells.
They got rid of theirs, are. And that's a nuisance also, that's, that's how this all works.
I don't care what the U N R now, so they own six dogs, that's up to them, but Christie, it's ridiculous.
Okay, um, number two. Oh, I'm sorry. Are we doing anything with the garage, or just...
It's, it's in our, for our houses.
Well, there's unsafe buildings. Oh, Becky Karman's got one of those.
And what's that, what's that considered, read that to me, will you?
Uh, various inadequacies. Because dilapidation, deterioration, decay, faulty construction. Removable, you've taken out part of this part of it. Detonation, decay, inadequacy of its foundation. Where it's likely to partially or completely collapse. Magnificently unsafe inadequate maintenance. Because dilapidation, decay, damage, faulty construction. As a fire hazard, abandoned, it's not abandoned, but broken infestation.
What do you do about it, if people don't have one?
They don't have.
Unfortunately, that's not true, if they don't have money, there's four people in that house that all get checks. And they have plenty of money at the first of the month.
Yeah, two of them doesn't contribute.
They don't, they don't know how to spend it wisely either.
No.
I, I'm just saying, you know, nuisance next to your house with the smell is just as bad as the nuisance next to ours.
I'm not saying that it's not a nuisance, I'm not saying, I just don't know, I just don't know how you...
So, what do we do?
Well, I've sent letters to them too before. Yeah, do I, what else are you talking about?
Fliers, fliers for out.
Well, you got cold, you got cold crowds too.
Yeah, yeah. Did they fix up some of it?
You know, they did a roof, but not the back side.
Holly worked at shit, did they send him a letter too? Somebody else did some other stuff here, what, three or four years ago?
Oh, yeah, that was under my watch.
Yeah. I mean, but we've done stuff about dilapidated buildings, so. I don't know, other than the garage, no, or is that, is, is the rest of it, it's got a hole in the roofs and all that?
Yeah.
They've got a hole, but it's caving in, yes, and then the rest of it's covered with tarps, and those tarps shred. So, in order for me to mow, I have to go out and clean up all of the shredded tarp every time I mow, because it's all over the yard. It's just, it's a disaster.
There are two other houses that have that tarp.
Well, speaking of tarps.
That hasn't been thirty days.
Well, what do you do if they have no money to, to fix it?
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know what, what do you do?
What has happened before? It's just like one oh nine, when it threw a big... You don't have a lot of money. One oh nine and...
I don't, I agree with you, I don't know how to, I don't know what, what do you do?
It's just part of home ownership.
So, do you go in and, are you willing to go in and take the garage down if they want to fix it? I mean, at the end of the day, that's what you say you're gonna do in the letter. So, are you willing to go in and do?
Then you put back the guns there.
I guess with them, in my opinion, I would rather, being like, except for the one. I would rather see you guys approach the people, with kind words in the letter, at least in this situation, but I can come in if you want to. I mean, I would rather, I'm not saying that's maybe not the right way, but I think that maybe with any approach of them, or that you see there's something that can... Even if it doesn't, I don't know. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I don't see, I feel like that's the better of a start at least.
They're pouring out a bottle of it.
I know they have, I know, I know they have.
And they have no power, and they have no water.
Is that sanitary?
It's very sanitary, yes. That's all we have to do is protect it, as long as they're...
Well, why just, we have to help them with the county, they need to excuse us.
I don't, if, since there's senior citizens can be... Somebody tried to help them with all this, and I don't think they wanted help. Somebody took them, I think someone took them, like, is that where you go? I mean, yes, and I, yeah, somewhere, someone, someone took them.
Well, it all depends, see, if that house is bad, my...
That house is bad, they shouldn't...
They won't touch it.
Well...
So, how do we, uh, if, if they're not willing to do that, I mean, don't, don't we have these requirements, you have to be in a, you are...
They are hooked up to water, but they haven't paid...
But they're not using it.
But they haven't paid the bill, so we also have the ordinance, if you don't pay, you don't get the service. I mean, they're, they are hooked up.
Yeah.
It's just...
Not right.
I don't know what... Two people are paying for four people in that house.
Do you have electricity?
No, and they can't have electricity, they come and, they either padlock meter, or they took them...
They took, they took the wires down when they came to shut them off.
And the wires were so bad?
When they came to shut it off, they noticed that the wire coming into the house, that connection was bad. And I was told that, the, the line guy said, well, it looks like it's had fire within it. And so, he's like, I'm taking it down because this is not safe. And so, to get that fixed was four thousand dollars, so... I feel bad for them, but at the same point in time...
That's a problem.
They, we're, they, they...
We made them make it that house, and it's that bad.
It's the house that, I don't know, can, can a senior check be done on it? I mean, they are seniors, they have no way to move, I don't, I don't know what the criteria is. But they have no electricity and no water, and no way to get anywhere.
But maybe they're...
He wanders the streets. It's probably to keep warm some days, and to see if there's food, um, I don't know.
Have anybody talked to them recently about getting them help somewhere else? I know these conversations have been had, to see if they're going like a cheap lean, like, as a place.
Yes.
They would hear, they got one capital.
But their mindset is...
Aren't you wanting to build it?
This is, this is what we're doing, is we're buying this house, we need to pay for this house, that's, that's why I'm making that. Because I did encourage moving, but we're paying for this, so we got to stay here. So, I don't know, I... What do you do?
You're on utility.
Well, I say, I wouldn't have to vote on them, they would rather walk up there.
Like I said, I think that's better, that's a start. I agree, some probably, but I'm not saying...
I'm okay if you don't send a letter, but I don't think if you send it, if you don't send one to them, you then not send one to the other people.
No, exactly.
Because you can't do that.
No, I, I agree.
Then you just have to not send it.
Okay, are we... Conversation with Sharon and then that one, don't I?
We don't have a conversation with Ken.
No, it's not his voice.
No, but I don't, when he just come outside, it's, it becomes up?
I, yeah, I know, yeah. Okay, so, are we, we had a motion in a second, we voted on to send letters for inoperable vehicles and those that have not moved in thirty days. And to five oh two Clinton, and the rest, we're gonna sit on until, for a while, okay? Let's move on to item number two, one oh nine, one eleven, to News Street. And Pam, would you like to present what you've worked so far on?
The pages that we've got today, um, are a culmination of information from...
This is what you wanted to hear, can you hear?
No, no, the four H property.
Oh, we're talking, oh, that's not on the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's not on...
The property across the street's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, with the property, what this is, right?
So, we'll put that on the agenda for next one.
So, this is what I initially started with, with the lawyer, thought we needed in there, or wanted in there. Um, that is what these pages are. Um, this is just strictly something to start with. And then to add, we did that together. So, um, formerly known as one oh nine, one eleven, Christie said, what happens if that is? We tell the county what the address should be, is that correct?
Yeah, we do that.
Okay, so, we can change that to one oh nine, four, one eleven. So, it's all one property. Rather than two. Um, let's see. I don't know, property is a hundred twenty foot by a hundred twenty foot deep. Lawyer wanted, it is zoned as medium density, residential left in, um, in this document. Seal bids are due, I don't know what you want to do about dates, I don't know how long we have to have this out.
Or you have to have a public hearing before you can even list it.
Okay.
Do I have to be a resolution? Yeah, that's what I said, you'd have a resolution to set the public hearing.
Okay.
And then a resolution to sell it.
Okay, and then how long after, if that resolution passes? How long do you have to wait before?
I was one of the questions.
So, we don't have an answer to that yet, we don't know...
So, we're gonna advertise this in the paper?
Yeah, you have to. It has to be published, and I probably couldn't, I don't, or we'd have to ask places to put it, I mean, Marshalltown, technically, would be a better place, but...
But what if somebody wants the two lots?
It's been, um...
Do what?
Put back the two lots. You want that one lot, so if they want to buy, they want to put two out of the lot.
That's not one law, huh?
Well, they don't.
Why not?
Or you mean that if they want to sell, have one of the lots up there?
They have to buy all this one, and then it's up to them how they have the abstracts. They could, they could keep the abstracts as separate abstracts.
And then they can go back and sell.
Well, that's what it'd be right now.
Right. We could, if we do the abstracts, we can choose to do one abstract for both lots, or two abstracts.
But she tells us not to do an abstract.
Right.
She tells us to do a full claim.
Put it all those to the same person.
Yeah. But if they're gonna do this, are you gonna be able to put a fourteen hundred square foot house on?
It's about what?
Yeah.
Fourteen hundred square feet is...
Okay, I'm gonna talk a little bit. I have no idea where we're supposed to be going with this tonight. I'm a little confused why they're so set on making sure somebody builds on this. Because, no, no, I think it'd be great, I think it'd be great. Um, I just think that you're gonna have a hard time selling it with that.
We can turn around and send this out again if we don't get what we're looking at.
Speaking my part, I guess, I think you're gonna have a hard time selling it, I just feel like if somebody wanted a building down, they probably already would have.
I don't agree with that at all, where are they gonna build it?
There are, I think, a lot.
Well, they don't die.
I'm just saying, I just, it's getting so outrageous to build, I just, I'd just be surprised if you got this, that's all.
Only your eyes.
I mean, we didn't tear that down for tax purposes, so...
No, but it should be nice and cool to be cool.
They want, they want to move it down, there you go.
This, if I get fourteen hundred square feet, it's a way too much.
I just, it's just getting really expensive to build, I'd just be surprised if I don't spend that much of this stuff.
Or someone to just put a shed up.
Oh, I can, I'm surprised how many people looked at the house.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying there isn't, I think there's some people that may invest in coming to this down. I'm not saying it's not interesting.
I think we should let it go like this, and there it says, we have the right to refuse. May reject any and all bids, and it's sole discretion, and issue a new bid for the property, so...
Well, I think this is a good start. Well, I think this is a good start.
I don't think we can, why can't, why wouldn't we try it? This is all new to us, so it's... And she...
We're talking all the reasons.
If, if we're gonna talk about consistency, okay, just hear me out. Right across from us, next to, next to Laura, is it right, uh, Mark's five block, there's an empty lot. Is there, is there a statute that somebody needs to build on that, so?
No, because the city doesn't know.
City don't know.
That's privately owned.
Okay, but this is what I'm saying, you're gonna have a lot that you want somebody to buy that will be privately owned, but you want stipulations and statutes on what they have to build. We have, we have lots all over the, all over the town that I've seen, nobody's building. Hell, half the time, they don't even maintain it with, with mowing and writing letters.
Careful, you're, you're talking about something that you know this much about.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying though, if, if we're about, we're about tax money and consistency with cars or, or other things, would, would these true or not? Should these be filtered in?
What, what we've been looking for long term here is to not recreate what got us to where we are right here.
And that is?
And that is...
For, for property owners?
For plan.
That does this, so now the city recoups property and now we sit here...
We want somebody that has a stake in Lisco.
Correct.
And I just wanna add that fourteen hundred square foot is quite large.
It's two hundred square foot larger than my garage.
I was gonna say, my garage is bigger than my house, but it's double wide modular.
Well, that's, that's...
Ours is fifteen hundred and you know, it's, Merna's isn't even fourteen hundred.
Okay, so I guess hundred, just go with this one here now.
Right.
Is, would it be better to do like, you mean such a value?
No, because I don't wanna see somebody put up a great big Morton building, you know, that, but it's not...
But how?
I wanna see families come to town.
I think it'd be great.
Am I wrong?
I don't, no, I...
I don't wanna see somebody put up a building so they can store their cars or I wanna see families come to town, right?
That, that's the purpose of this, you guys. The purpose of establishing a city is to create a place where we all want to live, okay? Now, I don't see Jim Moser, uh, birthing his cattle on that spare lot, and I don't think we want that. And I don't think Jim would, but I don't know about the next guy that buys it, all right? Morton building, you know, families don't live in there. If that's what you guys are looking to do is to promote that, then you take action to promote it, and that's one of the ways that you promote it, okay? The city has no control and chooses not to have control over a private individual's ownership of their property. And I hope they stay that way between you and me, all right? But the, the city has the option of doing this, and the city, if, if they so choose, has the option of trying to promote a certain construction there, if you will, okay? And, and what they're, what you guys are trying to do, my interpretation, is that you're attempting to come up with some sort of a description that will promote that.
Let me, let me read that description in this. It says, "Single-family dwelling, a minimum of fourteen hundred square feet, and must be built with traditional wood-framed construction materials and methods, or be a manufactured home of a simpler style. Construction must conform to all Lisco building and zoning codes." And that is how the lawyer wanted that.
Laura, Laura mentioned that we have a building code?
She said, I want you to put that on there for future reference, is what she said.
We don't have that.
Oh, "A new home must be built on the property and have construction completed within two years of the date of purchase. Extensions to this time limitation may only be granted by specific permission of the city council." That's what it says, and it says something about residential tax maintenance, they knew that, so...
So if we put this up for bid for just what we got here, and nobody bids on it, we'll just have to change it.
We can, no, that is, yes.
Well, so, Sam, you can put modular down there.
Do you want it?
Put modular on down there.
I've got it, I said, I'll buy mine, I'll say you can...
Well, that's, you can do it, we'll sell it.
No, don't please.
There's no things on here though that I wonder...
Which one?
They have to come to the council to get an extension for the two-year time, right? I don't really understand, just wanted to get that. You know, I...
She wasn't really... I don't know, it's just, it was totally, it was really vice specific, I should have told the council.
So you have, I can't do that, or if they don't do it, I don't know what...
What are you telling me, how do you think we should?
Well, I know that, well, what's the team that is?
What are you gonna do if they don't build it?
Right.
And you don't wanna give them...
Oh!
So, so like, I bought this property and my dad got sick and I spent all my money on it for nine, for two years and a half trying to get it. Well, I mean, there's all that is...
I don't know where... It said it went back to the city, it's what it says.
Really doesn't state the, so I want to know...
I think she can't take that out.
Well, that's why we're there, but you can go, so we're here.
But it's the extension.
If I can say that, sorry, if it doesn't say that, that's just saying.
Right, I want more of it. Probably don't have that. I want you guys to know what you're gonna do with that, isn't it?
Oh, my God, if you could buy a new bar.
Right.
I said, more money, why?
You're gonna have to let them take some of my own money for that.
Well, we oughta just table this first, right now. We ain't getting no work.
Do you think, Pam, that the attorney had, there was something in there at one point in time?
I think there was, that it, it re...
Goes back to the city?
Yes.
So they give their money back, or we take that?
Yeah, I don't know, that's like...
That's something Laura's gonna have to ask, we're gonna have to ask her how it went.
Okay, so, did you make a motion to table this until next month? All right, is there a second?
Sorry.
All right, all, roll call vote.
I only, Dr. Lawyer, me more, of what we've been doing.
Right, okay, so there's a motion in there, a second to table this until next month, until Pam talks to the lawyer about that part. Roll call vote, Craig?
Yes.
Ted?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so, all right, um, item number three, can you go with Mike?
The first of the ones from the Montplas Malask, we have, they're in the fabric ground. These are, these are gonna be sold, or maybe a bunch of them, because she has tax on everything. That's gonna be, roll call vote, we're gonna vote on them, so...
Is that the seven thirty sixty eight?
Seven, seven thirty as well, she has tax on there, so this is...
She says not to...
Well, yeah, we, we stack the rule, we have.
Yeah, we don't.
So it'd be the, they're installed.
So we, what, there's a seven thirty sixty eight and there's an eight sixty five sixty?
Eight sixty five is last one, that, that fabric ones that we didn't do.
Oh, okay. The, um, the third, the vinyl, or the vinyl ones are sensitive.
Yeah, the vertical vinyl.
Seven thirty is, that is too much stacked.
Yes. I, I don't see a benefit for this.
Did we, did we have a sample?
Oh, I should, I should credit you. She had Sam on my first dinner here for the fabric ones, but then I missed call her and said that you guys were working on the vinyl kind, so she just sent me a picture. I make color in the way, so, she can come up and be picked up, I mean, color.
Well, that's gonna go without a coup d'oeuvre, or whatever.
Well, that's, we got this.
That's right.
I said, well, I have to go with the D W K. You know, what the paint?
I want...
She matched this stuff, I might return to tell her about the paint one, I'm not, not, she can match stuff better than I can, I'm not gonna be much of a...
I wonder if maybe I could run to town for the next meeting and bring a sample back, so, for Steve. All right, then talk about...
I meant with, okay, the acoustic panel, I meant with winged, uh, products. Um, here's, I don't guess, seeing this email, you gotta get that, so...
Didn't see the picture.
Well, I think there's, well, you said there's something else there. Well, all of this is a sketch of, so, more or less, he came in and took pictures and he made some recommendations that, that we could do to improve this. He said that the, the texture, the, it's always, he said that you don't know how this stuff works because it's like full of paint or whatever. And he said that you could, you remember, maybe you could tear that off and put a, they have a spray in blue that you can spray on, it's a sound, a sound, and you can battle it, he said. Uh, maybe that'd be said before, it looks like, it seems like a lot of work. And we talked about that, he said curtains, uh, sound curtains, acoustic sound curtains hanging up like drapes, which I don't know how that would work in here with everything going on, it's like they get ripped off, but, I mean, he gets along with those.
That too, hangs up, I couldn't see kids grabbing.
He wasn't, he wasn't real, I mean, the way it sounded, he didn't know how it was with the roof, the ceiling ones with workforce and the walls. And he did send us a, all of dividers, the divider, it's on the billboard, divider, you can set up in these rooms when you have meetings, and, uh, and there are acoustic dividers. And there's a website, if you go on your computer, you can click on it and show you if you had a chance to get it.
Didn't they also say since we have the concrete floor, that makes, that's pretty tough to...
Yeah. I mean, that's where you're getting all the doubts about it.
There was something I read, I don't know, I read it on some website, and that's what it talked about, it says, "Flat surfaces." That's your worst enemy, is flat surfaces. So we might be able to do stuff here, but without doing something to the floor, are we still going to?
Yeah, I don't know what you would, I don't know what you would be willing to do.
It comes to sound, every though it helps.
Yeah.
It's kinda like mitigation, you know? You may not eliminate all of it, but the floor will be canceled out the more people you pack in here.
Oh, yeah.
Or the more furniture you put in here, or whatever, that'll cancel the floor out. Well, doesn't matter how many people you put in, your, your ceiling's flat, it's gonna bounce off.
And I don't know, I mean, these meetings are, was really an issue. I would, I mean, when I'm here for activities, I don't really go sit much.
We're here for the, it's gonna get loud, I mean...
Yeah, it's, I mean, I mean...
And I know it's a lot regardless, because there's people, but...
But I guess, I was talking, I don't know, the, I mean, the divider, that's what I was, I don't know.
Or you could, well, I don't want to trip, you got in that room.
Yeah.
Well, then...
It belated them.
What about hanging, there, yeah, hanging something down yea far from the ceiling?
So they do have soundboards, I saw on all the airports I went to, um, when they actually hang down with this part, they're actually waving.
Oh, like curtain, a draperoo.
They don't drap, they are a hardboard.
Okay.
But they just, they, they're curved, and that whole point is to, to break by weight. Yep, and they look good, I mean, the airports hanging down way lower, we wouldn't do that obviously, but they do have stuff like that. But again, what's the price of that?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I could call Neil and I can see, I mean...
Or maybe it's a problem if you just start on the ceiling and you just go from there, I don't know. With how much everything costs, maybe that's the right to start, I don't know.
Well, and what, just looking at this, what if we put those in two flats?
And they would lose house, they need space down there.
Yeah.
They are potentially look nice, I mean, it's not very, it's very, it's not...
See, I had more in common before we came to the school, because we had a problem with commons, and I'm gonna, actually, you know, I'm putting panels in commons, it's something for flat panel, but the reason they were so good there is because I got room between the panel and then the ceiling, so it has time to go back up and come back through, and that's for you, that's what they want, I guess. So I'm adding panels in there, and I put some of walls in the commons, but he said, yeah, he actually, that, that was worse, the reverb was worse there than it actually.
We can't do panels like that here.
Well, I don't think it is, what he said, I don't think it's not that we couldn't do it, but he, what was this? Yeah, he was thinking what would help us the most, who is this? Said I would not recommend a primary solution, uh, only because since the box wasn't used for music rehearsals and performances in here,
Yes, yes.
That while the ceiling and wall panel would benefit, the acoustic part, and this big square, and the design, the structure would not, I would not recommend this primary solution to be, but, that's what he...
He wasn't around here when this place used to be hopping, huh?
So I think...
Well, I don't like the idea of drapes, for the simple fact, trying to keep them clean is, isn't gonna be...
And all the doors, and they'd be ripped off, like, on the floor.
Wouldn't keep it started around in your swing room.
I'd be curious to do the research on the first part you mentioned, but, for the spray deal.
Oh.
Oh. Yeah, because I never noticed it before, or I guess, but maybe I'm just totally missing it.
This, this is, you tear this, this, tear this off that's on here, because behind it's just insulation, whatever it is, and you put a fabric over it, whatever it's up, and somehow you, you gotta make it so it looks nice and...
It's a little tight.
They'd almost have to be on panels in some spirit.
And I can see, they...
So is there anything we can put over these panels? Is there any kind of spray that they made that we can, no?
I mean, to replace them.
Okay.
And I just, I mean, I'd need to replace this if we're gonna have the same exact thing, but we have nothing to cost, I mean, I don't need...
Didn't Strand offer us an option of fabric panels?
They, we did have a price for ceiling, we had some of the ceiling.
We had a price for acoustical tiles similar to what we have, and then she, I don't know that we got a price, but they were coming out with that new product that was a fabric tie, a fabric panel, I think it was in the same size as, what are those, eight?
Four by eight.
Four by eight, I think they were...
You mean the thick panels, the fabric?
Yes, yes.
That's what used most of them.
They were putting them in, uh, the music, or the auditorium of Marshalltown High. There was a new vendor that was gonna do that, but we didn't get a price.
You didn't refer to some of those?
No, we had a price.
Was it the twenty-four thousand?
Ceiling was, the thirty-six hundred.
The, the price on all of that was more similar to that.
Okay.
But I, I could go back and get a price on the fabric panels from her.
Just, I guess, I think if we're going to start somewhere, I think it'd seem to be a smart... Just, I guess, I think if we're going to start somewhere, I think the ceiling would be a smart place to start, and we can see what we think we need to do from there. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I do too, I agree with you.
I don't, and what they say nine, honestly, I feel like that's a little, you know, I'd like to see more than that. Um, I'd rather see.
That's what you need to expand.
I would rather see, if we're gonna do this, I'd rather see us start with the ceiling, and I don't think that nine is enough for us, but I guess I don't know what, how their math works out exactly. I'd rather see a few more than that, and I think that would be a good place to start, that I'd be willing to start, because then we can see what kind of difference it even makes.
Well, and with four, I mean.
Yeah, and I'd be curious.
Maybe they can space them a little too somehow, they can do them so they're not right over against the ceiling.
With the ones that Strand suggested?
It's not in there yet, that's.
What about, what about getting the building painted?
Would that?
Start.
I think we should paint it.
Right, start with, start with.
Well, I think we'd, I think we'd paint the ceilings.
And the bottom part.
There's hardly any, there's not much painting on the bottom at all.
No, but painting it, yeah. It's great.
Get it, and then that.
Lord.
And, yeah.
Do they have bits, spread bits?
Yeah, I've scared.
Yeah, I have bits for that.
You're talking about painting the paneling?
No, 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 just, just the.
Just painting.
Just that whole section between the.
Just get it brightened up in here, let it be cleaned up. Painting the, painting the ceiling and painting the bottom part just to get it cleaned up.
So what do you want to paint?
Well, there it is, right? Okay, here's the panels, we got a price for.
What were the two by eight?
The four by, well, these were the panels, thirty six panels on the wall were twenty eight thousand eight hundred dollars.
But we might, that's, but that is the same type of stuff as we have, which we probably don't want.
So there was nine two by eight ceiling panels, that was thirty six hundred dollars for those, because you don't, which, I don't know.
If that price, I might as well just do a drop ceiling, and that'd be more effective.
I know. We brought that up, we'd have to drop everything.
Well, the ceiling, the drop ceiling, Ted?
Yeah.
You have to.
I don't know, you think you can put a drop ceiling?
Ted was, Ted was here when they.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ted was here when they did the ceiling, I was asking him if we can even put a drop ceiling in.
Well, it's locked from here, so, it's possible, but it's, you know, it's just gonna lower it that much.
Then you're gonna lower your fans.
Yeah, everything's gotta be lowered down, and it just, but the, leaving that one there and then dropping it down.
And you think there's enough support to add more weight to it, not a problem?
Well, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
I don't know, that's.
I think we go down the rabbit hole here, though, every time we start talking, it's like, where do we want to start, like?
I agree with you in the ceiling, haven't you checked, and, and yes.
I feel like you want at least a four base of the ceiling with you, I mean.
Now, let me, let me ask you questions when I go back. Let me ask about the fabric panels on the ceiling versus the, what we originally priced.
I thought they were fabric on the ceiling.
No, the ones we originally priced were the same kind of stuff that's above it.
Yeah, they've cut. I thought they talked to me, they didn't even make this stuff anymore.
So let me price, let me go back and price fabric now.
I think you get a price on the ceiling when we start there, because I think that's the best place to start, before you start jumping into everything else that you really need to spend.
There you go.
I agree.
We usually like.
I agree, maybe we may need.
This will take care of it.
Might.
You've been, I've been, I've been giving some prices to this. From that, from that part.
So what do you think about getting, putting it painted?
So I'd say the ceiling, sure, right?
Yeah, this would be great to add.
Do you start with the wall before you know it, that'd be the difference?
Well, don't you think we could do the bottom part and get it cleaned up?
Well, they pretty much paint their, they're gonna paint the ceiling.
Yeah, I think we should do this wall, and then if we have to touch up that, if this is a touch up.
Makes sense.
What about, and talk about the offices too, did you mean?
Why, this was all, this paint quote I had was for both here and there except for Yorac, because it was locked, that, that would not take much to do that. Yeah, it might be just, this was twenty six hundred sixty five dollars.
I was gonna say, you may have to have it moving out there, Christie.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
How much was that, Mike?
Twenty six sixty five, the paint, all those ceilings and the whole building and.
And this?
Yeah, the kitchen.
Do we have a color in your office?
White, brighter than.
Do we need to get another bid at maybe six sixty five?
Black doesn't seem that bad.
Yay, I'm gonna throw out there, let's do a motion to get ceilings, offices, including Christie's, so it will be a little bit higher. Get, let's move it stifle.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion to paint, did that include the bathrooms?
Bathroom and the bathrooms, whatever we could paint in.
It's just that ceiling. Okay, we have a motion to paint the ceiling, the portion between, that's painted, the kitchen, the bathroom, the meat, the conference room in there and the top, is that correct?
Yeah, the, it's what we said, we'll say add one.
Yes, 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 yes.
I think they did it last time.
Okay, so that's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, roll call, vote, Craig?
You.
Ted?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Steph? Okay, motion's here, so Mike, do you wanna work with the painter?
Yeah.
Okay, then at the next meeting, I'll try to bring a sample for the blinds, and maybe we can get that accomplished and get the blinds and painted and, and we, oh, and then I'll, I will get a, uh, bid from Strand on fabric panels, okay, keep it up. Okay.
Do we wanna go ahead and change that too?
No, let's wait, let's wait till we see what they.
All right.
Let's get this going. Okay, the next guy is, um, Liberty and Buskin, they're in committee meeting on Wednesday, April seventeenth at five thirty. And that's, we'll get started. Uh, siren project. We're getting really close to putting it in, the pole is a pole in.
We don't know if they're using our pole or they're putting a new pole.
They're putting in a pole, yeah, they're putting, they have to put in a pole.
Same spot.
Long as it doesn't go off at four o'clock in the morning, that would be, would.
Somebody went in, burned the box off.
So, yeah, Kim went around with the people to, you need to decide if you wanna keep the old siren or if they can dispose of it, whoever this company is, who's someone.
What would you want?
And I don't know, I don't, that's what she's like, I don't know why you wanna keep it, 'cause it's a hundred, a hundred thirty years old.
Um, and then we have to dispose of it someday.
Oh, yeah.
We got something on page, huh?
Crap, crap. Oh.
We're going to crap, I don't know.
Well, we could say we.
We have to have a motion to pay.
Well, yeah, so we'll wanna keep it and just scrap it, or just let them have it and it's fine.
It's prepaid, we don't want prepaid.
Yeah.
Do we wanna keep it and scrap it, or do we wanna just let them take it? I think they can just take it.
Yeah.
I can scrap it.
And then we did get a proposal from Hawkins to do the electrical work, so we didn't, um, some of this, the grant, okay, some of it will be, have to pay, the portion that goes from, for the generator, a bill will have to pay, because we're the only ones that have a generator, that would be tied to it, I guess. Um, but I'm not sure how much of this, anyway, she says, we submit the bill and then they pick what they will pay, and then we pay the county to act for what, they wouldn't, the grant doesn't come.
The whole, the whole bill has to go to the county because of the grant, and then it has to go back. So, all right, is there a motion to hire Hawkins to get this work done so that the siren can be completed?
I don't have a vote.
All right, roll call, vote.
Are you gonna put that up and turn it down?
Sure. Right.
It's kinda hard on my ear, is there a?
Craig?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes, Steph.
Okay, wonderful. All right, um, okay, quickly, the no parking sign at the shelter, Christie was here the day that, um, Deputy Hunter came and talked about the no parking sign, okay, there's, here's what they, they gave Christie three options, here they are. There's there. Um, he didn't think that the sign had it illegal. So one option is to put the sign into the code, here, through the. Put it in the code, um, how many feet from the cross street, the no parking is to be. Second option is to put up a no parking from here to the corner and place it on a post at vehicle level. The third option is to paint the street with diagonal lines where no parking is to be.
Well, that's what you do if you're in the ordinance.
That can't be.
Technically. But once in the ordinance now, it's ten feet, he roughly walked it off and said it's fourteen fifteen feet. So it's too far where the sign is currently, it's too far, the other option is if, take it down, kids are gonna run through the water, get their feet wet anyway if they want to, so, I don't know.
We have a sign that's named to stop parking, park in front, but I don't know why. What?
Why do you think?
I don't know.
I've got, I know, I've got parents who are not happy about the people parking in front of the sign. But I don't know how, how to. Mike, what do you think from a school perspective?
Well, they don't have the, they don't affect the school much, are they?
No.
Kids are gonna.
I know there's people, they've been talking to people about already, the sign.
I had a conversation on Facebook with somebody, and I'm like, kids are gonna walk through that anyway. They're gonna walk through the park if they want and. They're gonna get to the bus.
If we put up the no parking from here to the corner, is that, that needs a resolution too? Everything needs a resolution?
It'd be easier for them to report and force a resolution. Otherwise, maybe we could do ten feet and put the sign down, and that is in there, but I'm not sure that they can change much.
I'm curious, what are we gonna do, can you pass?
Making the parents.
There's no people apart, or there shouldn't be part, part of somewhere.
Or else.
Well, of course, it's, it's a shared task, there.
Yeah, there are people here.
He sets up their, I mean, certainly, he sets up their projects.
Darlin', what's.
He's proud to, I know he's talking to some people because it's for my relatives to talk.
Darlin', what's, you're here every morning, what's, what do you think?
You know, Big Park got there, you go down, we're just here for a short time.
Does it say on the sign, if you're here for a short time, you have attention to this?
Oh, they can't. How long that been there?
Quite a while. That sign.
One of his biggest deals is that it's up high, it's not on a normal street sign height, so.
Well, if you put something.
There's another.
Is that gonna impede snow moving?
Back up, open it?
Yeah, no big deal?
No, I don't have that.
Well, that's the problem.
What's the problem?
Who knows how to knock them down?
What's anybody, okay, what's anybody's thoughts on this?
The hell are you?
Huh? Anybody have thoughts on this?
Well, it was a bar of chocolate, hey, y'all aren't down there?
Well, you'd be able to see that when there's snow on it.
Well, I, no, no.
I, I think these people, there's the same, it's the same group every day.
It is, it's the same people.
You would think that they would get the hand here emotionally, but.
And it's not really the people in town, it's the people out.
Out of town, yeah, that's what, that's what I keep hearing.
Uh.
Well, so what if we, what if we start with painting the, the, the street?
Do we have a resolution for that too?
Where the sign is now, though, it's not per ordinance.
So if we move the sign to deeper ordinance?
And then paint the ten feet.
It's just by the sign, there's no part here corner.
It has to be within the ten feet?
Yes.
So you're, okay, you're giving another card.
Put a sign that says no parking in here corner, and go, it has to be on the post.
I could put the other side there, but.
Well, no, it has to be within the ten feet.
Fifteen feet.
The ten feet is in, is in the code now.
It is in the code.
The city traffic.
Well, then.
We can't park.
Let's solve it.
I think that's standard.
Can we get a no parking from here to the corner, put it within the ten, or at the end of the ten feet, try this?
Oh, okay.
Or not?
So then I'll, we have to move the sign, right?
Oh, I got to put a post there.
And we don't have to change anything.
We have to change.
So we wanna paint the, paint the street too?
Let's start with the sign, okay, move it, put the sign on a post at vehicle level, ten feet, and try it.
I feel capable, but they're gonna complain ahead there.
I mean, if you do it like we just said, and an officer comes up there, he's got something to stand on, because that's our. Or rooms, Chris.
All right, let's do that then, we don't need a motion.
No.
Okay, um, Devin, tell us about the parking stores.
Oh, it's costly to do going in the last week of April, correct? Um, we need to, I believe we need to talk about gravel. Um, can you ever figure out, or can you get somebody to get us deeper? Cause that would be an insurance deal, correct?
Well, I think there's.
Can we just come in and get the?
We kind of dug, yeah, we dug through the gravel, but I'm sure more of what they needed once they moved it.
So, yeah, we're going to need to buy a bit more gravel here at some point for it, I'm sure. Um, I don't know whatever happened, we talked about redoing the boundary at some point, which is gonna have to come out somewhat for this project. Um, I don't know if that's something I wanna look into, but we're in the midst of.
You're talking about gravel, you're wrong for.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna do more up here, the, once we're all done getting it installed, just here in a couple weeks. Um, so I guess that's, I don't know if that's something we need to put on next month, or by this time next month, it should be all completed, or maybe can't go on it yet, but it should be sitting there, so. I don't have much else to say, I guess we're just gonna need some more gravel here at some point with the project, so.
So we eat a bunch of the butter?
We go, I might do a few, yeah. And, like I said, I don't know if this is something that you wanna go ahead and redo the boundary or not.
Will that kind of be determined once they get here and we're gone?
Well, it's just kind of, we wanna redo it, because we talked about it, and it's kind of falling apart over there.
Oh, you're talking about the black, yes.
Yeah, because we talked about that's gonna be redone at some point.
Or just reset it.
Or reset, ultimately, of course, but, uh.
Well, they keep jumping on it.
What would you expect?
So, I'm gonna keep anything up if they're gonna keep jumping on it.
Well, there's.
Put a sign up, I can't.
There are short options, that's why, that's why I wondered if you were in the middle of anything.
Put some fence over it so we can't hop over it?
Is that something we need to do?
What?
Do we need to prepare, you said it won't be, it'll be up, but it won't be ready, does it need to be enclosed?
So, the one I saw in Conrad, they're putting it up, and I guess we'll figure this out when they come, but the one that got put up in Conrad, they had it all set in place, and then they had caution table around it, because I think it had to sit for so long, and so that was all like blocked off, and I have like that orange, uh, snow fence around it. I don't know what they'll do.
Do we have a road snow fence?
I don't know if that was what, so it was the one by the, that's the church.
Yeah.
Um, that was all around, I don't know if that's what the construction guys did, or if that's what City Conrad did.
A lot of.
Well, yeah, we did the ones at the school, you had left the Conrad, so it's a long insurance, and they're, they're having it, yeah, twelve days.
Yeah, exactly.
I've been out here.
So, yes, um. I have a.
Let's make a, let's get a motion for gravel at this point in time, is there a motion to buy gravel depending upon how much?
As we.
As we.
Yep. Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, roll call, vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yeah.
Mike.
Yes.
Cam.
Yes.
Devin. Progress, Devin. Okay, um, quickly, uh, anything on cleanup days that has to be taken care of? Okay, um...
What's that again, sorry, cleanup day?
First weekend of...
Second, third, and fourth.
Second, third, and fourth.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right?
Oh, there's two days, and Sunday.
Well, if we got a new media, if we got a new...
Oh, no, they...
We just drill them.
Um, new business. Uh, diligent alcohol permit. So, we just have to prove it. Is there a motion to approve the diligent alcohol permit?
Yeah.
There's a second.
Second.
Roll call, vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Cam.
Yes.
All right, um, committee reports, anything from Ben?
No.
Uh, anything for first responders?
No.
Streets and alleys, anything new on that?
No.
Uh, parks, cover?
I'm planning on buying those trees here coming out.
Okay.
I think that'll be this month, they're coming out now, so... The trees we approved for seven hundred dollars for last fall.
Oh.
We approved seven hundred dollars last fall.
So, what are we buying?
Tree box?
Trees.
Where are we putting these trees?
At the park over there.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to get the, is there much buried out there? I was gonna ask you this.
What?
Is there much buried out there?
Where?
One call, sort of, call out of the old school grounds.
Nothing buried out there.
You'll just have to make sure you're not with fireworks.
Um, but not in front of the pool.
Yeah.
Not there. Um, I was planning on, uh, messaging Kate over, yeah, to her again.
They're, they don't have any, where you...
They don't do it all.
There's hard, there's hard way for it.
Well, last fall, she said she wanted to do it, so that's why I asked you, so I wanted to do it.
I don't think there is one.
Okay, sounds good.
They got, they got kids, and they have three.
Okay, um, is that all, of course, Devin? General utilities, is there any unpaid bills? One water bill unpaid?
Two.
Two water bills.
Two water bills.
Um, we had sanitation report, correct?
Yeah.
Public safety, anything on that? Community building recovered, correct? All right, um, is there any, any residents concerned? Is there a motion to approve the, to adjourn meeting?
Yeah.
Whoa, is there a second, I'll go to the favor side.
All right.
Oh, we need to adjourn.
Good. But, but, um...